We haven't started yet.
Sorry. Sorry.
You need to start it.
Okay. Okay.
All right, we're live. Go ahead.
All right. All right, welcome everyone. I first like to say that we're holding this board meeting in accordance with the governor's executive order that allows for electronic meetings. That order is set to expire on June 30th next week, so we will resume in-person board meetings after that time. We plan to honor social distancing guidelines for our upcoming in-person board meetings and also would like to remind my fellow board members that we will have only one board meeting until July, the first meeting of the month. And that is a typical practice for the board to not hold a second meeting in July. So David, if you could, please call the roll.
Dr. Gentry?
She's struggling to unmute, but she's here.
Gentry's present. Ms. Elrod?
Present.
Ms. Elrod's present. Ms. Spearing?
Present.
Spearing's present. Ms. Bugs?
Present.
Bugs is present. Ms. Bush?
Present.
Bush is present. Ms. Player Peters?
Present.
Ms. Player Peters is present. Ms. Pupa Walker?
Present.
Ms. Pupa Walker's present. Ms. Frog?
Present.
Madam Chair, you have eight members present.
Thank you. All right, so we will turn first to the governance issues and the consent agenda. And I do have one question about one of the consent items, which would be number one, C5, communities in schools of Tennessee. And did anyone else have anything else, any other consent issues that you'd like to discuss off the consent agenda? Okay. Well, I just had a quick question. I noticed that we are funding communities in schools now, and it was my understanding that we were, that MNPS was funding community achieves as our in-house community schools program. My question is, have we funded communities in schools in the past? Is this a new practice? Because it was my understanding that they were raising private funding, and maybe they just raised part, private funding, and then we fund the rest of their activities. But that was, that's my quick question.
I think the team is not on the call, so I will respond to that question. Under our community achieves umbrella are several different programming strategies that exist. So we do have our community achieves. We also have our family resource centers, and we also have communities in schools. Communities in schools has been under the umbrella for several years now, providing services to selected schools, particularly in our priority schools area with regards to attendance and other wraparound supports. And so I hope I answered your question. If you need me to elaborate on anything else, please let me know.
I think that's it. So what, so they are, they raise private funding, but we also help fund their work as well, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Well, I will move that we approve consent agenda item one, C5. If there's a second?
Second. Jeanne?
Okay. So we have, I'm sorry?
This is yours. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Approve the whole consent.
Looking down to the whole thing? Okay, that's fine with me. All right, so I'll withdraw my motion to approve the one item and move to approve the entire consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second. David, would you take the roll call vote, please?
Dr. Gentry?
Prove.
Gentry votes aye, Ms. Elrod?
Aye.
Ms. Elrod votes aye, Ms. Spearing?
Aye.
Spearing votes aye, Ms. Bugs?
Aye.
Bugs votes aye, Ms. Bush?
Aye.
Bush votes aye, Ms. Player Peters?
Aye.
Player Peters votes aye, Ms. Pupa Walker?
Aye.
Pupa Walker votes aye, Ms. Frog?
Aye. Okay.
Madam Chair, you have eight ayes.
Thank you. Next, we have the 2020 Magnet Schools Assistance Program Competitive Grant Application Resolution. Do we have a motion?
This is Sharon Gentry. I move approval.
It's on consent.
Okay.
You dealt with that as a consent item.
Okay, well, the resolution, okay, so this is my mistake, I suppose. The resolution, I thought, was a separate matter. Is that a separate matter from the consent, or is that still part of the consent?
It's listed on the agenda as part of the consent. It's one D and one E, both of those resolutions.
So I do want to take a discussion of the resolution, just to make some comments. And I guess I can do that at this time.
So...
But we voted on it, so I'm sorry.
As a matter of procedure, I mean, I can help you with that if there's, if you'd like some clarity, but otherwise, I cannot.
Go ahead, David, that's fine.
So if you want to take that up again, a member of the prevailing vote would have to make a motion, and then you'd have to have another member of the prevailing group in which every, that motion prevailed unanimously. So anyone can make that motion, anyone can make a second, then you'd have to have a two-thirds majority to reconsider.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to reconsider, just to make some comments about the resolution that we've just approved, and so I would appreciate a second.
Second, this is Jill.
Okay. Can, can I call for a vote, please, on that, David?
Yes. Ms. Gentry?
Aye.
Gentry votes aye, Ms. Elrod?
Aye.
Elrod votes aye, Ms. Spearing?
Aye.
Spearing votes aye, Ms. Bugs?
Aye.
Bugs votes aye, Ms. Bush?
Aye.
Bush votes aye, Ms. Player Peters?
Aye.
Player Peters votes aye, Ms. Pupa Walker?
Aye.
Pupa Walker votes aye, Ms. Frog?
Okay, aye.
You have eight ayes.
Okay. I apologize, I was taking the resolution separately, but you're correct, it is under consent, so. So I just wanted to make a few comments about this resolution, because I think it's important that the board stays looped in on, on any decisions that are made by the administration. And obviously, our director of schools has authority to make operational decisions on behalf of the district. But, you know, this is an unusual time, and a lot of the decisions that are made around the pandemic and responding to changes in numbers are going to require quick decisions and real-time changes. And so obviously, we can't, as a board, have constant school board meetings to address those changes. So, but I do want to clarify, I did have a conversation with Dr. Battle, and I am getting some feedback just from the public, concerns that we may be ceding all of our authority to the, to the director without having input. And so, so first of all, I just want to clarify three points that I've already addressed with Dr. Battle. First is that, that, that the decisions that are made, and I don't think it's important to change the actual language of the resolution, so I'm just going to state these, the concerns that I have, and have an agreement from Dr. Battle, and just move forward that way. First of all, I think it's important that the decisions that are made by Dr. Battle's team, that the board is immediately informed of any changes. And that was part of the resolution, but I just wanted to be very clear that we will have, we're going to get reports, but we need to have immediate reports if there are any major changes. I think it's also important that Dr. Battle makes decisions on changes in consultation with the board chair, which happens to be me right now, but will not be me for long. So whoever is the chair would have consultation with Dr. Battle about any major changes that are made. And third, I think it's also important to point out that the board must approve any funding changes that happen, and that is, that may not be necessary to state, because that would be governed by statute, but we will still have input on any changes in funding. So those are the only comments I wanted to make. If Dr. Battle wanted to, wants to say anything, I welcome your comments, otherwise, I'm happy to move again to approve this resolution. I'm going to make a motion to approve the resolution as written.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Are you going to speak to the second resolution?
I, which, what second resolution?
E.
That's what I thought we were voting on. Now, I, this is where I'm confused, I'm sorry. I am talking about E, a resolution to approve the Nashville Plan.
Okay, perfect. So if you're not going to change anything, can we just make, get a motion to reapprove the consent agenda as, in its totality?
Either way.
Excuse me, I do have a comment to make about, about E before we move on.
Okay.
Ms. Frog, I appreciate your comments. The sentence that concerns me is, let me give it, put my microphone, okay. To the extent that any board policies conflict with the Nashville Plan, they are temporarily suspended, which means we, our board policies, or some of our board policies, or even one of our board policies could be suspended temporarily if it conflicts with the Nashville Plan. And that's a little scary to me. We have our policies that have taken time and energy and that have been agreed on by this board. So I would ask that, before we suspend any board policies that conflict with the Nashville Plan, that Dr. Battle inform us of that. Dr. Battle, would that be all right with you?
Jill, this is Melissa. This, I just wanted to pipe in and say that this language is similar to the language that the board approved with regard to virtual meetings, and that we suspended board policies that conflicted with allowing virtual meetings. Similarly here, if there are board policies related to, it's almost hard to envision what board policies may be implicated, it could be a number, it could just be very few, with the Nashville Plan, that they would be suspended to allow for the orderly operation of school.
So if, my question remains the same. If there are particular board policies that need to be suspended, I would just ask that the board is informed of those prior to the time.
Jill, this is Melissa again. Are you asking to amend the resolution, then? I'm not sure where we are procedurally. Are you making sort of a request similar to what Amy did? Because I do think that board notification is built into the resolution.
The resolution is actually not binding. I'm asking for a commitment from Dr. Battle verbally, that if a board policy is going to be suspended, that she will inform the board of that particular policy that is being suspended temporarily.
Hi, Jill, this is Dr. Battle. I think that should not be an issue. I think, keeping in mind that any plans that we bring forth will come before the board. I think the only scenario where, is if there's like an immediate situation where there's a COVID response, and we have to respond immediately, given some, and as Melissa said, I can't even imagine which one it will be, but just if there's a need for an emergency situation. But otherwise, all plans will be coming before the board, before any execution or implementation. So I think that is agreeable, understanding that, you know, when we, when I make decisions regarding inclement weather, we're talking about one or two days, sometimes there might, in this COVID era, who knows? But there could be a scenario where something comes up that might impact our ability to remain operational for a number of days that might require a quick response. So that's the only kind of consideration I will put out there. But as Melissa mentioned, I can't imagine what, what that could be, given the policy waivers that have already gone before the state board on our behalf. So I think that is doable, for sure, and of course, reminding the board that our plans moving forward will come before you in the, in the weeks and months to come.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. That satisfies me, and I'm happy to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second. All right, Melissa, let's have a vote. Thank you for your, your support of my motion to rescind, so that we can have a little discussion. All right, so David, would you take a vote, please?
Dr. Gentry?
Aye.
Dr. Gentry votes aye, Ms. Elrod?
Aye.
Ms. Elrod votes aye, Ms. Spearing?
Aye.
Ms. Spearing votes aye, Ms. Bugs?
Aye.
Bugs votes aye, Ms. Bush?
Aye.
Bush votes aye, Ms. Player Peters?
Aye.
Player Peters votes aye, Ms. Pupa Walker?
Aye.
Pupa Walker votes aye, Ms. Frog?
Aye.
Frog votes aye. Madam Chair, you have eight ayes.
Thank you. Okay, next, we will turn to the Director's Report, our people HR update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I am going to turn it over to Dr. Chris Barnes, our Chief of HR, to provide you with our people HR board update.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Board and Dr. Battle. I'm pleased tonight to bring you our board update. It's going to focus a lot on our current staffing patterns and where we are. Could you advance this slide, please? As we talked about, HR has really three main goals, and all the work we are doing focuses in one of these three areas: obtaining the best staff, training them to be better, and retaining those teachers and staff that are good for kids. This report tonight is going to focus intentionally on, next slide, please, our work to obtain and our work in retaining those teachers who have been displaced either through budgetary concerns or through consolidations. So next slide, please. I want to say proudly that currently, we have 39 schools that have zero certificated vacancies for the 2020, 2021 school year. In addition, next slide, please. Excuse me, these are some of our tweets out that we've been doing. Every time a school hits their 100% staff mark, I've asked them to send us something so we can share out with the community, the work that HR and principals are doing in hiring and obtaining those good staff members. Next slide, please. These are just a few of them. Our HR Twitter page has, sending those out almost weekly, so. Our next slide, please. Further, we have 63 schools with three or fewer vacancies in the certificated areas. That means that almost 75% or 102 of our 138 schools have three or fewer certificated vacancies currently for the 2020, 2021 school year. And we're very proud of the work that principals have been doing to advance that and to work with hiring the best people for their school. If I could see next slide, please. This is just an overview, and I took this from yesterday, so you can see the numbers are even down a little more from when I sent the update on Friday. Currently, we have 241 support vacancies, 195 certificated, and a grand total of 439. Just for a frame of reference, last year at this time, our certificated vacancies were over 275, so we are moving in the right direction. Beyond just making sure we're obtaining the best staff, we are also working to retain those staff that have been affected. If you can go to the next slide, please. One more advance, please. No, go back, I'm sorry. We do have teachers that were displaced due to budget and enrollment. Oftentimes, if enrollment is lowered, or if a staff funding is lowered, those people are displaced. Now, this year, we had 183 teachers who were displaced through no fault of their own, meaning it had nothing to do with their performance, it had nothing to do with the work they were doing with children, it was simply a budgetary or enrollment issue. Instead of allowing those teachers just to look for their own jobs, we've been supporting those 183 folks. Those are certificated and support, I'm sorry, it says teachers, but those are both, both ends of the spectrum. And we've been lucky to place 126 of those 183 so far, and we're looking, it's about 69%, and we're looking to place the rest of them in the month to come. So our work has been helping those people look for vacancies, helping place them in schools where their license and their ability will help support children. In addition, if you can go to the next slide, please. Due to the school consolidations, we had about 142 certificated and support staff that were affected by the school consolidation. We only have 15 of those left who are awaiting placement, so almost 90% of those displaced by school consolidation have been settled in new locations. If you go to the next slide, please. There are some areas that we still want to pay attention to. We have currently 19 math vacancies and 42 exceptional education vacancies. Those 42 vacancies for exceptional ed do cover the gambit of our high needs, our resource, and several different exceptional ed areas, because those are specialty licenses. In the support world, we have about 54 nutrition cashiers we're looking for, and several more in the nutrition area, and we are looking for about 25 exceptional education paraprofessionals. So even though we have come a long way and done a lot of work, there still is some work yet to go in those areas. Next slide, please. One more. Thank you. As we've talked about, when I first came in, one of the concerns was about making sure we had actionable data and information about what our turnover meant and where it came from. One more slide, please. This is a screenshot of our website for HR, and as you can see, we have put exit survey, one more slide, please. We have put an exit survey link right on our website, so even if an employee has left our district, they are still able to provide us with that information that we need. In addition, if you can go one more slide, please. And one more. Thank you. In addition, every time we receive a resignation notice, this email goes out, a personalized email goes out to every employee, inviting them to take the link, take the survey, and also invites them, if they have more specific concerns, or if they'd like a more comprehensive exit interview, to contact my office, and the HR team will be glad to meet with them to make sure that we get their feedback in that space, if that is better for them. Next slide, please. Oh, I wanted to also add, we have about, over the last month or so, we've gotten 150 responses to that exit survey, and once I'm looking for a goal of about 200, and once I have those, I will be analyzing, parsing that data out. I'll provide you that analysis, and also to the executive directors, so we can help support the retention and at individual schools. Just want to share with you a couple of quotes. It's been really great to have principals actually email me directly and talk about the work that the hiring managers and the folks in the HR department have done, and it's really pride, it really makes me proud to see the work that the HR folks are doing to improve their customer service to the schools and to the principals. And I think I'm just going to leave that slide up there, but that's, that's the presentation I wanted to provide for you. Can I give you any more information, or do you have any questions?
I'll just say, thank you, Mr. Barnes. This is fabulous, and just to have this information, I know you guys are working hard, I'm glad to see teachers that were displaced are being placed, and maybe one of the upsides of the, the sort of recession is that some of these support staff positions can be filled quickly, along with school bus drivers. So anyway, thanks for all your hard work and your team.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Spearing?
Yes. Chris, I want to thank you, number one, welcome to Nashville. Thank you so much for coming and moving your family and yourself, and I know your family's in the process of moving, and thank you so much for coming to Nashville. I really appreciate the work that you're doing. I especially appreciate the exit surveys and to keep up with why our teachers, our employees are leaving. I also want to thank you for keeping me updated on principal placements, and I have one question. You said that for all those who have been displaced, 90% now have new placements in schools with classrooms. And am I, am I correct that we have 195 openings for certified teachers? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So you have, out of the folks that you have hired this year, those are not, they're not, I know this, a couple of ways to think about the process. One is a promise of placement, and another is an actual placement. So those other folks, are they actually placed in a school? Are they, or are they on a list to be placed?
They're on a list to be placed. If there's one problem, it's, it's hard to say that we have. We do have some vacancies where we don't have any vacancies for someone's specific licensure area. When I talked about those 15 that are still to be placed from the consolidations, nine of them are support staff, and six of them are certificated staff, and currently, we're waiting for the right openings. We're also trying to accommodate folks, I don't know if, you know, maybe I'm just from the, from the sticks, but this is a big city, and driving around it is challenging. So we are trying to work with people to find places that are geographically convenient for them. You know, it's not fair to have someone whose school got consolidated and make them drive an hour and a half to come to work in the morning. So we're trying to work, and we do realize there will be another sort of round of vacancies that comes up over the past month, and we're confident that those people will, will slot into those vacancies as they come.
Yes. Do you have a contingency? I've heard from some principals that if we make the decision to go back to school in person in August, that some teachers will quit at the last minute. They'll either take a retirement, but they, they don't feel comfortable coming back to, to the environment, of the school environment. Do we have a, are you thinking about that? And is there a contingency plan of how to deal with those last-minute?
Yes, ma'am. And it is sort of a, it's a, it's a dangerous game of chicken that we're playing, because we obviously don't want to have more staff than we have vacancies. However, we do know that there'll be more vacancies. Dr. Battle's built a very comprehensive plan for our reopening, and we have some opportunities in there for staff that may not feel comfortable coming back to work, because they're in a high-risk category or something of that nature. And part of our higher forward plan, as we talked about, was to make sure that, you know, we get the right teachers and staff, but then we also treat them in a way that they want to be in our district. We support them, we mentor them, and we are hoping that some of the things we're looking at doing will reduce the number of teachers who leave us after the school year starts. One very good example is, in the past, what we've done is, when a teacher has been waiting for their license, so they've applied for their license with the state, and it sometimes takes two or three months, we've been paying them as a substitute teacher rather than as a first-year teacher. And so we're looking for some ways to provide for a permit to teach for those folks, so that they don't have to work on the substitute rate while they're doing the job of a teacher. And that accounted for 40 or 50 vacancies last year, from what the principals were telling me. So there's several different things we're looking at in that higher forward plan to provide for things like that.
Yes. Thank you, Chris. I think the fact that not only are you an HR expert, but you are also a previous educator, so that goes a long way in dealing successfully with our turnover and our vacancies. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. And I would be remiss from telling you, my folks who work with me are the experts. They have been working diligently and hard, and they've been, you know, answering the phone when I have a crazy idea at 9:30 at night, and they've been helping shape this as well. So I really, the work is theirs, and the, the congratulations really go to them, and we're looking to continue to do the things that we're doing to move things forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bush?
Yes. Hi, Chris, how are you?
I'm good, ma'am. How are you?
I'm good. And you know, when you first came to pretty Nashville, you know, I was pretty tough on this topic about our teachers and retainment and recruiting, that kind of thing, and I just want to tell you, I am so super impressed with what you've come in and you've done, and we've never had this happen before. I'm sorry, never from in my time of being on the board. And I'm sure some of my colleagues can agree, that they've seen something that's different about HR. So I will appreciate you so much. I appreciate you for being like... I appreciate you for being like Ms. Sparing said, you, you're staying in contact with us. You're telling us about our vacancies. That communication means everything. And I just want to tell you, your hard work, your staff, kudos to you guys. Continue that work, continue what you're doing. Your mission is definitely not, not in vain because you're doing such an excellent job. So I just want to tell you, thank you for all your hard work. Thank you for having those ideas at 9:30 at night. That's how you get things done, right? So I appreciate you so much and thank you for keeping us informed. And, you know, you're moving the needle, so we appreciate that.
Ma'am, I just want to tell you, we're just getting started as well.
Dr. Gentry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Barnes, I just have a, want to go back to the vacancies conversation.
Yes, ma'am.
We shared, so 39 schools with no vacancies, 63 schools with three or less, three or fewer vacancies. And so that leaves us, that totals up to 102. So it still leaves us with a good bolus of schools that have, according to your breakdown, four or more vacancies, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Is to know which of those schools, especially how many of those schools that are looking at four or greater vacancies are on our priority schools list? And you may not have that handy right now, but if you could send that. And then I would just, the next time we, and I guess we're, we are convening in July. But I would be looking to see how we're going to address that, right? So we've, we've made some changes and some adjustments. We typically have a large number of vacancies in most schools anyway. We've gone through an entire school year with some of those schools missing some key staff and math and literacy areas. I don't know that the adjustments we've made will see any benefits if we enter into the school year looking at the same level of vacancies for those schools and those students specifically. I want to say it's for those students. So I would just be, would like to see the numbers broken down even further with regards to the number of vacancies and in what subject areas and in support areas are we still looking for, for talent in those schools?
Yes, ma'am. And I think even, even further priority schools, it's really our middle school space that is the most challenged. And so the next time we do a board update for Dr. Battle, to send you, I'll make sure I include those specific questions in there.
I have a question. This is Frida Player Peters. Can you tell me how many of people have retired through their, their natural tenure as, in their career? They've come to a maturity point and decided to retire and had those vacancies. Are those vacancies included or are we still waiting for more retirements to come through and be processed?
Most of the folks who have retired usually let us know at this point because there is sort of a, a holdover before their first check arrives. So a lot of them have told us already simply because that way there's not a break in, in, in salary that comes to them. I think there is some question, as, as Ms. Sparing said, about how many there will be late in the game because of the concern regarding health and wellness. Right now in May and June, we had 104 retirements and resignations. I don't break it out necessarily any different than that, but we do look to try to find ways, you know, a lot of our folks do like to retire and come back as 120-day employees. And so they sometimes revolve the door and turn around and come right back. But, but I don't have the exact percentage of how many of those were retirements versus resignations.
Okay. And can also, can we have a copy of this presentation after the meeting, please?
Of course. One thing I want to note is that the numbers I am looking at are folks that we are taking through the process of hiring. They have offered, been offered the job, they've accepted it. The jobs do not come down off of the, the job board unless we physically take them down. They don't come off until actually they're actually hired, hired, the very last step. So some of the discrepancy you'll see is there are still jobs out there that have been offered and we're working to try to take those down to help us focus our efforts on the places where they most need to be.
Thank you. Anyone else have any of, there's Ms. Elrod.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, so you have 42 exceptional ed teachers that are needed in 25 paras. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
What is our plan to try to find those specialty license positions?
And those are, it's, it's difficult because the best place we usually find those folks are growing our parapros up into teachers. You know, we have several different programs to support them going through the process of obtaining their license. It's hard to put an alternative teacher in an exceptional ed position because the job has more than just children and, and learning with it. There's also a lot of paperwork, there's a lot of rules and regulations to follow. So we are looking to try, the best space is to encourage teachers we already have to go back and obtain their EE certification and transfer over. But we are looking and just sort of beating the bushes for every time we find an EE applicant, we send them towards those schools that have them.
Okay. And then what are we, what about the 25 paras?
We are hoping that some of the folks that we have that are support vacancies can move into that role as well. And so we're just looking to prepare them and place them. Some principals are concerned about budget and things like that. So there is a little bit of, of everyone's holding their breath a little bit to see what happens with enrollment.
Okay.
But usually our parapro positions come in sort of later in the game.
Okay. So I guess my question is probably more along the lines of the 42 for the exceptional ed students. It seems like a lot of positions. So I'm curious, is that an increase from in the past? Or is that on, is that an average number that we usually have?
Well, one of the things I was very impressed with, and I've been in collaboration and talk with the exceptional ed director and Dr. Williams as well, is we really work to have a very low student-to-teacher ratio for our exceptional ed students. They're, they're shooting for a 15 to one ratio. And so the, the trick is to make sure that we've got those people going in the places where the specific needs are. I think that 42 EE vacancies, when I've looked at, I've got people in my department looking at, Metro Nashville is the 38th largest school system in America. So I've asked them to track number 30 to number 45 or so to see what kind of vacancies they're looking at, to see if we're missing something specific. So schools like us in larger districts, what are they struggling to fill as well? And I will say that exceptional ed is a nationwide problem.
Yes.
I think, you know, it's a double-edged sword. I think it's amazing, I came from a district that had a ratio of 1 to 30 for exceptional ed. And to have us reaching for 1 to 15, that does create a lot of EE vacancies, which is a good thing because that's how we support children. But that is a large hill to climb and so we're just doing the best we can to find it.
Okay. So the one, the 15 to one ratio can still be met because that's what we're reaching for with those vacancies that we currently have?
If I filled everyone, that's the plan, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We, if we filled everyone.
Got it. Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Mr. Barnes.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. All right. Dr. Battle, do you have any more comments on this topic before we move to reopening of schools?
No, ma'am, I'm not on that specific topic.
Okay. All right. I will turn it over to you.
All right. If we can pull the next PowerPoint up, please. All right. Good evening, board members. It was good to see you this morning, even under difficult circumstances, at Anna Shepherd's memorial service. As I said at our last meeting, it's going to take a while to get used to being in these meetings without Anna. She was a tremendous leader and a delightful person to know, and I know we will all miss her dearly. Tonight, I wanted to give you an update on our progress towards reopening our schools in six weeks. Next slide, please. The Nashville Plan put forward a minimum standard for schools to follow when operating in the COVID-19 environment. It set forth some rules on what could happen in Phase Four, Phase Three, or Phase One or Two environment based on the mayor's roadmap for reopening. As of yesterday, Nashville is in Phase Three of the mayor's plan, which allows for schools to be reopened, but with some significant restrictions and safety precautions put in place to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. The Nashville Plan for reopening is a countywide framework for MMPS, private and charter schools, with the understanding that each organization and each school might have differences in implementation. In order to create implementation plans and further guidance, we've created a task force with three working groups consisting of district staff, principals, teachers, parents, students, union representatives, health officials, and other stakeholders who might provide important and necessary insight into how we can best reopen in August. Those working groups are operations and safety, academic planning, and student, family, and staff support. Next slide. First up is the Operations and Safety Work Group. Consisting of 29 members, they are working largely on the logistical implications for safely moving around students and staff into buildings while keeping everyone safe and secure. The group includes individuals representing our operations teams, transportation, nutrition services, principals, health officials, and communications who are working to develop implementation plans and guidance for schools. Some key issues they're looking at include identifying scenarios in which a person might test positive for COVID, the protocols to put in place for addressing that positive test, and how to communicate that out. Just as, as we have protocols in place, if we found a gun or another item in school or there was an emergency situation, we need to have a consistent approach in place for when schools close so that we notify staff, parents, students, and the public at large for when a case presents itself. This group is also developing further guidance for health screening and monitoring protocols to take the information in the Nashville Plan and put it into context for the school environment here at MMPS. They're looking at how we can put in cleaning and disinfecting protocols for daily activities and in the event of a positive COVID-19 case, while also giving guidance to schools on how they can safely accomplish open houses or other events without endangering the health of staff or families. Next slide. Our operations team has also already begun the process of purchasing PPE and disinfectant materials so that students and staff will be protected when school starts. We know we'll need a lot of masks as well as gloves, sanitizer, and disinfectant to meet the needs of students and staff if we're going to follow health protocols. Thankfully, we'll have funding from the CARES Act grant to support these efforts and allow for a healthy supply when we begin school this fall. Obviously, the overall amount required throughout the school year will be determined by the spread of COVID-19 in the community. Next slide. One of our greatest challenges we face is how to provide a consistent, high-quality education in a variety of different environments and to do so equitably for students of all different grade levels and individual circumstances. chaired by David Williams, this team has five working groups focused on professional development, curriculum, and instruction, supporting all learners, devices, and materials, and ongoing support and evaluation. Next slide. There are many issues to unpack in this working group. How we'll distribute computers and supplies to students, assessing students' academic needs to help them make up for any loss of learning resulting from the school closure or summer, making sure we have plans and structures in place to support all students at the start of the school year, and training all teachers in the digital environment to support their students' learning, whether we are in class or working remotely. Next slide. The Student-Family-Staff Support Work Group is looking at wraparound services and supports to give students and families a more productive working and learning environment and care for the needs of our MMPS families. A student's ability to learn is heavily influenced by their life and family environment. Also, COVID-19 presents challenges to teachers and support staff above and beyond work. We need to be looking at how to continue to support families and staff in times of distress or need, especially already vulnerable populations who struggle with social distancing, remote learning, and many other factors that change daily lives as a result of the pandemic. Next slide, please. While our working groups are soliciting the input of individual teachers, staff, and families, it is critical for us to get a broader sense of the mood and sentiments of our stakeholders before moving forward with finalizing plans for the next school year. Next slide. In our staff surveys, we broke it into two parts, certificated and support staff, in order to gain insight into the classroom and beyond. 4,449 employees, 3,126 certificated, and 1,323 support participated. What we see here is that most teachers and support staff want to see either a hybrid approach or in-person classless. Slightly more teachers want in-person versus remote, while slightly more support staff like the idea of distance learning over in-person classes. The plurality of both like a hybrid approach, which was defined as in-person or remote or staggered schedules between in-person classes and distance learning. We also asked teachers how comfortable with remote learning they were. And 86% of teachers said they were either somewhat or very comfortable with remote learning, while 14% were not at all comfortable. Our CARES Act request includes new funding for teacher training in the virtual schooling environment. And so we hope to see those numbers shift as we get closer to the school year toward very comfortable. Next slide. Not surprisingly, among teachers, teaching staff, we found their preference for in-person classroom settings was highly correlated to their comfort level with remote teaching. Those who were not at all comfortable supported in-person classes by 67% to 6% for distance learning, while a plurality of those who were very comfortable wanted to see distance learning and 41% wanted a hybrid approach. Next slide. We also asked a few open-ended questions to gather feedback. And our research assessment and evaluation team worked to categorize and code those into categories for analysis. Here, we asked them what is most important as they consider returning to in-person work. What we're seeing is that the most important thing for teachers and staff is to see and understand the protocols and measures in place to provide for their safety and that of their students, and then to see them put into action. That also includes the emotional and mental health of students, staff, and families. There's also a strong desire by some to return to the normal classroom or work experience. And there are two splits among those who have either a very low or a very high fear of COVID-19. Next slide. When we asked how the district might address concerns they have about reopening, the majority wanted to see the development and communication of specific plans, procedures, and protocols for the next year. That's what our working groups are doing now. We know that there will be some flexibility required at the school level, but it seems very important that there be a common set of protocols in place so that all staff can rely upon them once returning to the work environment. It will be very important moving forward that we continue to review, refine, and reflect upon the protocols in place, soliciting feedback from staff and families along the way about their efficacy and how we can improve. Next slide. Through our parent and family survey, we solicited feedback from families about their preferences and desires for the upcoming school year. Here, we can see that a plurality of respondents is not comfortable sending their children to school quite yet. But 60% of respondents are either mostly comfortable or comfortable with returning to in-person classes in August. Next slide. Elementary families are the most comfortable with a return to in-person classes, while families of students in non-traditional schools, represented here on the chart as other, are less comfortable sending their students to school. Those schools include early learning centers, alternative learning centers, Harris-Hillman, Merle, The Virtual School, and others. Next slide. When asked the best option for their students, the plurality want in-person and the majority, 74%, want either in-person or staggered. About one quarter of parents would like to rely on distance learning when school starts. Next slide. Once again, we see that elementary parents are most supportive of in-person classes, which should not be surprising as elementary education is the most challenging from a virtual perspective and requires the most time and attention from parents to be successful. The older the student gets, support for remote learning grows, with the most support from high schools or other schools. Next slide. So what do we do with the data we've received? It is clear that there is a strong appetite for remote learning options among one-fourth of our parents and teachers. of our parents and teachers. It is also clear through further exploration of our options that the type of staggered schedules required to teach all students in person while maintaining social distancing protocols would likely not be possible without significant investments in new teaching staff. Even with that, there will still likely be many parents who wouldn't be comfortable sending their students to class due to COVID-19 concerns. That leads me to the conclusion that we should be offering virtual schooling opportunities to as many families as possible, allowing them to gauge their circumstances and decide how feasible it will be to support their child's education in a remote environment. There are a number of factors that we still need, that still need to be decided. How this, how will this work from a budgetary perspective? How will divide up the work among teachers, allowing some to move to remote teaching? How to assign grading and responsibility for those student outcomes on a school basis, understanding there are budgetary implications for student-based budgets? Ensuring students who need technology have it available to them. We have computers on order from Dell, but we won't have all of them by August, so we must have an equitable way of providing these to the families that need them. I don't have all the answers today, but we are working to have those questions answered following the Fourth of July holiday to give parents time to consider their options and decide what is best for their students, and give us time to implement the staffing, accountability, and training plans necessary to pull this off. One of the reasons I wanted to bring this idea forward now is so that we could get the questions and feedback from you and stakeholders that can, that we can log and work together as a team to have answered in a way that makes for a better plan to serve all students. If enough parents opt for remote learning, then we can reduce pressure on our school environments to better allow for social distancing protocols necessary to protect the health and safety of students and parents. All right, so I will, I will continue on. If there are questions, we can always come back to them, but I also wanted to give you a brief update on the budget process. So in addition to the remote learning plans, let me give you a brief update quickly on the budget process if we can advance to the next slide. Next slide, please. We are very appreciative of the Metro Council for prioritizing education during their budget process, which has resulted in some additional funding for M N P S that can be used to cover the deficit created by the three percent cost of living adjustment enacted in January, as well as additional funding or potential funding for staff raises. As you remember, we've already identified $10 million in budget cuts and savings in the budget that this board adopted in May. We requested an additional $15 million in unrestricted funds for our operating budget to save, or save all $15 million in additional cuts. The council adopted budget, budget reduces that deficit in half, which will help us to protect school budgets from cuts this year. We'll have a more thorough analysis of what those savings look like at the specially called board meeting to discuss the budget. $4.9 million was allocated to a contingency account to raise the minimum wage for M N P S employees to $15 an hour. Just so we are clear, this is enough funding to raise wages to $15 an hour but not to provide additional pay increases for those making above $15 an hour in order to reduce the compression effects of this. Finally, the council created an $8.1 million contingency fund for a step increase for certified and support staff. In doing so, the council sought to redirect money that was going to be allocated toward our fund balance. However, it can only be allocated if our fund balance is above three percent. Thankfully, our staff have been very diligent about sticking to our savings and budget reduction plan to account for an estimated $62 million loss in sales tax revenue. Based on the numbers we've seen coming in so far, sales tax revenue has not decreased as much as the Metro Finance Department projected. This means that savings will be redirected towards the fund balance, helping to ensure we are well above three percent in order to access the contingency fund. However, the Metro Finance Department has not provided updated revenue projections, and it looks like they will not be certifying our fund balance projections until potentially August or September, after the May and June sales tax revenues come in from the state to Metro and then to M N P S. One thing we'll have to be diligent about is making sure Metro understands that those funds that were placed into contingency accounts should be added to our baseline budget for maintenance of effort. Next slide. Last week, the Tennessee General Assembly adjourned again, but not before taking away funding that was supposed to go toward teacher pay raises across the state. Right now, as a result of that, we are anticipating a potential loss in revenue compared to F Y nineteen-twenty, although we won't receive those certified numbers until July. Of course, throughout every school year, revenue projections ebb and flow, and so this may be covered under normal operational efficiencies and ideally greater than anticipated local revenues. Next slide, please. The Metro Council approved the mayor's request to allocate $24 million from the city share of CARES Act funding to provide laptops for all M N P S students and hotspots for families who need them. Unfortunately, high demand nationwide for lower-cost laptops for students means that the supply is very tight, and there aren't ninety thousand computers sitting in a warehouse ready to ship. We've been working closely with Dell to provide them sooner, and we anticipate we'll be able to get a portion by August with monthly shipments during the school year. We'll have to prioritize those students who need them for full remote learning and then put an equity lens on delivery for those students without computer access at home. Last week, we also filed our initial application with the State of Tennessee for CARES Act funding to support remote learning, acquire P P E, and account for nutrition services revenue losses. We are still in discussions with the state about our funding formulas and our waiting approval so that we can receive the fund, funding and allocate it accordingly. So with that, Madam Chair, I will close out my director's report and definitely make myself available for any questions from the board.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Battle. Are there questions or comments?
I have a question. Ms. Rowe.
Okay, Ms. Bugs.
Dr. Battle, the students who still have laptops from this past year, are we doing an exchange of laptops? Are we working with students who didn't have them first? Because I know there was a two laptop limit per household, so maybe, you know, just, could you walk me through, through that?
Absolutely. Our current plan for students who are in possession of one of the 10,000 devices that we deployed over the spring will continue to have those devices. We will not collect those until we will be replacing it with one of the newer devices. So those students will be able to main, maintain access to those devices until the new device comes in, in which we will swap them out. With regards to distribution of the other devices, we'll definitely be prioritizing with an equity lens as well as students or families who might opt for the virtual option going into next school year. And so we'll be duly approaching that, particularly in our priority school spaces and students and families who do have a, have an immediate need for devices and for connectivity.
Okay, and then for one-to-one support staff, so let's say that there's a staff, a pair of pro or a support staff member who is assigned one student, and, but the pair of pro doesn't have a laptop. Have we considered how they'll be working with their students or what that might look like in the fall?
Yes, we had initial plans for all employees with regards to their roles and responsibilities in a remote setting. I will tell you that the work group team is hard at work right now, really updating those plans, given that we will likely have two scenarios in the virtual setting and the in-person option for families moving into the fall. And so we're adapting our plans now, anticipating that regardless of the structure that the family may choose, that we can immediately engage the student and that the, that the adults, the employees have the resources that they need in order to maintain contact and to deliver a quality education. So our original plans had roles and responsibilities for everyone, including our one-on-one support, but we will have to adapt that, and our work group team is in the process of adapting that, and will support those employees with the right resources so that they can execute upon those plans.
Okay, and kind of to follow up with that, do you see that being a major budget adjustment? Is that something we need to help advocate for, or do you think we'll have funding for those resources?
Yeah, I, what we have currently with our certificated staff first, majority of our certificated staff already have devices. The space that we'll need to land in for certificated staff will likely be around connectivity, so we are still advocating and getting resources to our certificated staff in that space. For our support staff, we will continue to have the need, I mean, to be able to fill the gap around devices and connectivity. So that will continue to be a space that we'll need to close some gaps and, and continue to advocate around to ensure that all of our adults are equipped also with the resources they need to work with our students. If we, what we're building into our plans is for the adults and for the students who will be in the virtual space, we will prioritize devices and connectivity to those individuals to make sure that they do have those resources. We are also planning for a blended approach, even in a face-to-face scenario. We have to be prepared in the future to pivot in the event that our numbers increase or we see a significant spike in any particular community or across the district. And so we're planning for all of it at the same time, which means that all at the same time, we've got to equip our certificated staff and support staff with devices and connectivity.
Okay, I had another question, but I'll come back to it because it just slipped my mind, so thank you for that.
No problem, thank you.
Mary.
Yes, thank you. Dr. Battle, I really appreciate this, this presentation, and would you send this PowerPoint to all board members? And if, if it's possible to get this prior to board meetings, it's always helpful to have it prior to a board meeting so that we can digest some of it before the presentation. I have several questions. One is about the task force. We, we know that elementary is very different than middle school, which is very different than high school. Are there principals represented in each of the task forces for elementary, middle, and high school?
Yes, I believe we have solved for that now. We have added a few more principals to our work groups. We've, they've just been so gracious and volunteering their time to meet and to get, to get their insights, so I think we balanced that out now in all of our work group teams. So happy to, to share that. And also with regard to, I will definitely get you this information. Part of the delay with providing the feedback data was we wanted to get every response we could into the data to share with you. We had some goals of how many thousands of responses we wanted from, from parents and from our staff, so I opted to leave it open to make sure that we could gather as much feedback as possible. So absolutely, I will get you the data and definitely understand the need for having it in advance when possible so that you can also digest it, but we'll, we'll definitely make it available to you, and our numbers should be up to date from all the responses we've received.
Thank you. And about the cleaning supplies, I hear, since we have outsourced our custodials, our custodial staff, I hear from some of my schools that there are times where they don't have the supplies, disinfecting supplies, cleaning supplies that they need because the company that, that we've outsourced to doesn't always provide that. So it looks like there's money in our budget from what you presented today to supplement that, but we might need to follow up with the principals to be sure that, that the company is providing what they should be providing, and then we can supplement on top of that. But the most important thing is having these disinfectants for our students. About training, it looks like there will be a combination possibly of remote and in, in-house learning, and that may look different across the district. It's, are we going to offer training for our teachers this summer so that they understand more, especially in literacy, so that they understand more specifically how to teach guided reading and the different process writing that is incorporated in balanced literacy? To do that online offers challenges, and I think teachers might need some additional support, so will that be part of the summer training?
Yeah, absolutely. I think what we also saw in the feedback that came back from our wonderful staff and employees, I'm so thankful that they all took the time, and our parents, to provide their, their feedback, and we got a lot of feedback that said, "Thank you for asking" and for letting us lend our voice." But what we did get back from them were two things that you've mentioned. One, making sure that we have protocols in place, but also those resources, the disinfectant, the hand sanitizer, all those things that our teachers will need and our staff will need to make sure they're following all the social distancing and the proactive measures we want in all of our schools. The second thing, the second thing that also did come up that you mentioned was around training. We know the importance of making sure that our, our, our staff are trained and prepared for the start of the school year. One of the timelines that we were up against with regards to budget, we knew that we were in a targeted savings space for the month of June, and so we initially communicated out to all staff with regards to our training plans for June. Now that we're on the backside of the Metro Council budget being approved, our CARES Act being submitted, and now being able to present recommendations to the school board for approval of our budget for next year, we can finalize the, the depth of training that we can provide for July and moving into the school year. Now, I say that to say that we'll be ready to hit go when it's time for, for us to do that. So the team has been hard at work planning around what the needs are, taking in the feedback from our team around what they need in order to prepare for various scenarios moving into the fall. With this data and with this conversation, I think what it's also helped us to do is to really focus in on what the true scenarios will likely be. I know a couple of weeks ago, we started planning around four scenarios. When I spoke about it two weeks ago, I talked specifically about three. So now we know we've got two primary scenarios that we'll be focusing on for next school year, which will further help our team deliver quality professional development to all of our employees in preparation for the start of the school year.
Great, thank you. Two more comments. I want to commend you for the surveys that you have distributed and sought feedback from our teachers and our employees and our parents. So thank you. I know that was a big task, and it's, it's so important at this time. Thank you. And the other thing is, I appreciate that you are thinking about this in terms of, we don't all have to do it the same way. Elementary, again, I'm, I'm just thinking about wearing masks and social distancing at the elementary level and at the high school level. I mean, there's, there's different, different problems, different challenges at each. So I'm so glad that you have principals and, and those, and there's various committees so that you can hear from them because they are on the ground with the students.
Absolutely, and I think this is an opportunity, given the feedback that we have received, to be as responsive as we can to our families and our employees, trying to set conditions that are, are supportive during this, you know, new, new time, new COVID era that, that we're experiencing. And so I think, you know, as the board has commented and has expressed to me that we want to be responsive to the needs of others while also keeping at the forefront that we want to continue the S E L and academic engagement and progress for our students. So that's what we're looking forward to do. Thank you, Jill, for the feedback, and again, thank you to everyone who took out any time in their day to provide this quality feedback to us. It really has helped us refine our recommendations to the board moving forward, and I look forward to providing even more opportunities to define these plans as we move forward. So I know in hearing this feedback and the direction we might be going, there's going to be questions, there's going to be wonderings, and I'd rather have them now than, than in August. So if you have questions, if you, if you have things circling around in your mind, we want to hear it so that we can work towards solving those challenges now in preparation for a smooth, smooth start in August.
Thank you, Dr. Battle.
Thank you.
Ms. Pippa Walker.
Thank you. I just, I have some questions. I'm sure all my colleagues do too. This is probably going to be one of the hardest years in the history of public education in this country, and so I know that you guys are working 24/7 and appreciate that. Couple of questions. Is there a way to get the survey data that you did with parents disaggregated, maybe by school or cluster? I'm just curious if there are parents who are more worried in one part of town than the other, perhaps. We know that fifty percent of the cases are in South Nashville right now. Are those parents more concerned, more likely to keep their kids home than other schools? Do we, how do we prepare for that if there's an imbalance of kids who don't stay in their school, for example? So I'm curious if that, if that's possible to get that information, just for a point of reference for us as we think about. of reference for us as we think about messaging.
Yeah, absolutely. I think as you're looking at the data, just keeping in mind that we do have variance in the percentage and number of responses by school. So what we don't want to equate to is one response in one school to 150 responses in another. So just, you know, for context, kind of keeping that in mind. Again, part of us just kind of trying to summarize this and pull it together today was because we wanted to continue to get more responses from as many families as, as we could. So we can absolutely share some additional data with regards to school, and I think I shared a little bit of data with regards to tier level, and we could see some of the differences in some of the requests given the elementary, middle, and, and high schools. So absolutely, we can share additional data that would be helpful to you as board members as we move towards the start of the school year.
Okay. I'm curious from the CARES Act money, you know, Secretary DeVos asked for what was considered not the normal distribution of funding to go to private schools this year, the, you know, the equitable services allocation. And so I'm wondering if you know of that money that was sent to private and charters, what percentage, is it more than what we traditionally should distribute based on Title I allocations, or was it? I'm just curious if anybody knows.
Yeah. Hank, do you want to jump on and answer that question?
I do, and I'm also feeding a baby. So, yes, thank you, Ms. Pippa Walker. Fortunately, based on the letters of intent, the, they did not come in as high as we originally estimated. You ask a good question about how it compares to the other federal funds that they receive and the percentage, and I will check on that. You are correct that typically that's distributed based on the poverty-based need of a student, and this was based on the actual enrollment in the school. But fewer schools chose to participate than we originally estimated. And so, so that was good news because more of that money could go to public schools. And I'll, I'll get you an answer on the other part.
Okay. Thank you. I'm curious, as your teams are deciding, lots of important moving parts, this is not about federal funding, if you want to go back to Henry. So if we have an outbreak in a school, for example, of COVID, if we see a hotspot in the school, what is the decision matrix? Have you guys decided yet? Does the school close? Does a part of the building close? Does a feeder pattern close? Have you guys started thinking about that? I've had some questions about how that's going to work.
I have, and I can reference the Nashville plan, but first, our work groups have been planning towards that. So Chris Henson, do you want to add any response to the question regarding our COVID response in a particular school or multiple schools?
We'll be glad to. And we have, as Dr. Battle indicated earlier, we have a representative from the Metro Health Department on our work group. And so, part of our discussion as of late has been just exactly that. What, what would happen if we have a student who ends up testing positive, or a staff member? And I shouldn't say what would happen because it, it will happen. What, what would happen? What would we do? And so, we're going to be dependent upon the, the health experts and the health professionals to help us determine what that needs to look like. And so, I don't, I don't think that they've come to a, a full conclusion as of yet, but that is a part of our discussions in our, in our work group, along with many other things. But we would really be depending upon the, the health professionals when that does occur. And I hope that gives you enough answer, knowing that we're going to need more specificity as we get closer to the school year beginning.
And if I can add, you know, with regard to the Nashville plan, the one thing that may not be widely known is that we do have a health expert in-house in Nicole Bull, and she is our primary contact with the Metro Health Department. And what we did establish was that we would use that train of reporting up through the Metro Health Department to make informed decisions with regards to any COVID outbreak as we move forward. So we do have that structure in place. And what might not be widely known is that is the same process we use for any other illnesses or outbreaks that we could face throughout the school year. So when people ask, "Do we follow how many students or faculty are out for the flu?" We do. And that's a process that we utilize to make an informed decision around any particular school closure or for district-wide. So we would use the same structure. It will become a little more complicated with regards to individual school closings, which is exactly the work that Chris and his team are working on, giving the contact tracing that will be necessary in this, this COVID space.
Thank you. So I'm curious about when we have students come back in, what, six weeks? If your instructional team has put some thought into how they're going to assess learning loss and how they're going to assess which students have lost ground and which students have not, for example, or moved ahead, and we'll see all of the above. Is there, I know the state has released a version of a, of T N R E that's not, right, it's not for public reporting, it's not for accountability, it's strictly just, it's a, it's a version of an, of an assessment that districts could use. But have we thought about using map testing? I'm just curious if we're going to be able to get a handle on where kids are so that families and teachers can work together to move kids forward after all this lost time.
Yes. David Williams is who's chair in the academic work group, and they have split up into subcommittees to account for assessing learning loss as well as many other factors. The one thing that we have considered and talked about is the need for us to address learning laws, to address the transition. I mean, our students ended abruptly their, their last school year, so how do we account for that? But at the same time, keeping, you know, high expectations in front of our students. We want to make sure that we still have our students accessing grade-level material, but we do have to take the time to assess where our students are, caring for their social, emotional, learning needs. This has been very tragic for a lot of our, our students and families. And so, we are considering our approach to assessing learning laws so that we can build strong plans into the school year. So that will definitely be a part of our reporting out in the next couple of weeks with regards to what that will look like in a virtual space and also what that will look like in a face-to-face environment. We are also considering how the two can have a great deal of consistency because at some point, we will get past this COVID era and will, you know, be likely in a more of a normal face-to-face scenario. We'll always be planning for the blended learning, but it's all, it all has to be planned for right now. So yes, that is a consideration. And I don't believe David is on the call to, to speak anymore in depth about that, but the team will be prepared to share out the specific plans in the weeks to come with regards to how we plan in Metro Nashville public schools to assess student loss. So there's lots of guidance and ideas out there, and we're trying to take everything in stride in doing what's best for our students to make sure that they have a, an efficient and sufficient transition back into, to the school year.
And the last thing I want to say, I know that there's active advocacy for further stimulus funds from the federal government, and I don't know what shape that's going to take and what that's going to look like, but I do think we're going to have to invest some meaningful resources into mental health supports and social, emotional learning supports for students, and hoping we can leverage community partners, all right? I think that we're just going to have to be really intentional welcoming students back in a way that acknowledges all of the different challenges that they face. And so, just want to make sure that's still a priority among the many, many, many things that you guys are trying to figure out right now. So that's, that'll do it for my questions. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Pippa Walker. Ms. Spud?
I think you're on mute. I'm Christian.
Man, you could have whispered that to me, Dr. Battle. I hate to be that person, but I was just messing with you. But I just remembered my, my question and my apologies, but just for protocol purposes, how should families go about, and I'm sorry if I missed it, but how should families go about letting the district know if they do want to engage in virtual learning? You know, if, if they decided at the last minute, do they just send their principal an email and, and receive their laptop, or what?
You didn't miss it at all. We've not, we've not released that plan yet, but what we are looking for is a very systematic way by which families would opt into the virtual space. We want to make sure that it's simple. We want to make sure that every family has genuine access to be able to do so. We will be rolling out some of the expectations around it if you do opt into the virtual space to account for, you know, we have a very transient population, but in this space, we need pretty good consistency with, with where students and families land. So that will be information that we will be sharing in the weeks to come. I just think it's important to get ahead of the conversation so families and, and our staff know what we're thinking about and we're planning towards so they can be considering what's best for their student and families. But we'll get all the logistical aspects of these options out there very soon.
Perfect. And then I wanted to ask, what is it that we can be doing to help you all? Do you need, yeah, just what do you need from us?
Hey, feedback is critically important. Every family dynamics and situation is different. So if there are considerations, even if it's, you know, individual consideration, we need to know about it, we need to hear it so that we can be planning for it now. I think just reminding everyone that this is a new space for all of us. We'll all have to be flexible. We'll all have to be able to adjust to this new way of, of connecting, engaging, and educating our students. And so, any feedback, recommendations that you have, that you receive, would, would greatly appreciate us, we would greatly appreciate, I'm sorry, we would greatly appreciate that. So feel free to engage with your communities in any way that you see fit and share that information back with us. If somebody missed the surveys that were going out, we need to know that. We need to know that we, there are other avenues by which we can connect with them and account for their voice in this process as we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Bush? Ms. Bush, you're on.
So you know my world is centered around our little people, you know, getting our kids ready for kindergarten. And the biggest concern I saw on the PowerPoint presentation that elementary parents do want to see their students safety-wise, if they can, go back to school. Because we know how important that particular grade levels, that, that great need in order for them to be very successful going into middle school and high school. And I worry about our kindergartners. That's what I worry about too, because if we have to do virtual learning, and I'm not sure if you guys have talked about what that looks like, because we know that that is such an area that we have preschoolers that are still at home, that are not in, in preschool, or of course, you know that we haven't been in school for what, almost four months, that they miss that time of foundation. So I'm really, really worried, and I think a lot of parents I've spoken with that are getting their kids ready for kindergarten, that they're worried because virtual learning is going to be very difficult for those students to be able to grasp those very high-need, you know, lower supports so that they can be successful going in first, second, third grade, fourth grade. But that's what we, that's what I worry about. Do you have a plan for those students? Because I think this is where we're going to really need to focus on, especially with those kindergartners coming in this school year. And I, I'll be the first to tell you, I'm very worried about that process. I know at my center, we definitely prepare our students for kindergarten, but there are other centers, other, you know, care places that are not doing that. Not that it's a bad thing, it's just that, you know, we have to really worry about that foundation for our kindergartners and how we're going to address those needs. Because virtually, I think that's what parents are worried about. And again, safety is always important, it's always number one. And with this COVID era, we don't know what's going to happen, of course, in the fall, even as we're planning right now, and of course, you know, you've said that. So do you have any plans about those kindergartners?
Yeah, so, so the good news is, if you've seen the work group teams, they are large because we want to make sure that we have representation from every space. And so, our, our early learning leaders and, and leaders at central office and externally are part of the work group. And so, with intent, we have them a part of the academic planning, we have them part of the operations as well as the supports so that we can have all these considerations in play. So when you, when you're thinking about our pre-K students, when you're even thinking about our youngest, younger learners in, in kindergarten, when you think about our exceptional ed students, when you're thinking about our English language learners, and when you're thinking about all those groups of students who have varying needs, we're trying to plan around all of them and what they will look like. Even in a remote space, if a parent selects that, I mean, think about, think back to the spring when we shifted to remote learning for three through 12th grade, what we did for pre-K K1 and 2 looked different than what we did for our third through 12th grade. Now, we now have the ability to capture some of our younger students in our Schoology plan, but for our pre-K and our kindergarten students, it looked different from the very beginning. And so, we knew that we had to do things like get them manipulatives. We knew that their devices looked a little bit different. We knew that we were connecting with them much differently via the internet or via television. So the, the team is diligently working around what the plans should look like and how they should be varied, given the age of, of the students. We need to make sure that everything is age-appropriate for our students as we're planning for the in-person and for the virtual. So absolutely, those voices are around the table to make sure we don't miss our, our youngest learners, especially as they're preparing, they're in their foundational years, to prepare them for their experiences in elementary school, middle school, and high school.
Okay. And you'll, you'll, you said after the Fourth of July, we'll be coming back to kind of look at some of those, those things that are going to drop out. Okay, thank you, I appreciate you.
Ms. Pippa Walker.
Okay. Ms. Player Peters?
Okay, we, to be muted. I have two questions. The remote learning, are we expecting teachers, so if I'm, you know, fifth grader assigned to Ms. Jones' in-person classroom, my parent decides to do the virtual classroom, is Ms. Jones still going to teach me virtually, or am I, am I sent to another class setting that's separate from Ms. Jones to do my education?
Yeah, there's a thousand ways to approach that scenario, but what would likely happen is you would not get your teacher assignments until we know if you're opting for virtual or if you're opting for face-to-face. We're going to be looking for as many budget-neutral scenarios as possible to make that happen. And so, we will be trying to match where parents opt in to the school structures that the student is assigned to. Because we want to keep our students assigned to and connected to their selected schools or their neighborhood schools, wherever they, wherever they've opted into so that once we get beyond this, they can transition back in smoothly with teachers who are also serving in that learning community. So it would likely happen in the opposite direction, more than likely, where we would know first which, which structure you're opting into and then assign teachers accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and also, sorry, just on the teacher end, how would the teacher end, but that, you addressed that in the question, that we're not expecting teachers to kind of play both roles as in-person and tech, as you know, tech can be very taxing physically and emotionally when you're teaching and training over online. The other part is outreach. How are we outreach regarding the survey? Is it only online? Are we providing robo calls for people who do not have access to internet or technology? How are we doing outreach for the survey? And then also, how are we going to outreach for the information? I want to be also that we're very intentional, kind of given some of the criticism that we've had in the past about how we outreach particularly to certain communities, whether it be language barriers or whether it be economic barriers to having access to communications that we as an administration are very intentional, that we're stretching ourselves to make sure we're communicating to the fullest extent about this complexity of this. I know we're going to ask for a little, not a little, hopefully people give us a lot of grace as we implement this because we're in very uncharted territories, but also we're doing our due diligence to make sure we are communicating to different populations, giving where they are at the given moment, and giving where certain parents might be working first, second shift, or even third shift, and that we'd be able to communicate them in a fair and equitable way, given that we're in this uncharted territory about how we're educating students in this pandemic.
Yeah, so all of the above. We're, we're leveraging all of our avenues of communication to seek this feedback, particularly with regards to the family survey. The reason, one of the reasons that we did choose to continue with the platform that we use is that many of our schools were already using that platform. And for those of you who are not familiar with POSUP, you get it via text message. And so, we already knew that, particularly in our priority schools, that families were already used to the POSUP surveys. And so, those were, that's also the survey system that we utilized a few weeks back to assess how remote learning went. And so, we went that route knowing that we got a high level of engagement with parents. of engagement with parents with using that type of survey. But we've also utilized our social media platforms and all other tools to push that information out so that families were aware to participate. And we did the same thing with our staff. I know we sent an email out, we did some blast. I spoke to the principals last week and encouraged them again in a virtual setting to provide their feedback. And over the weekend, we received like 300 more responses. So we will continue to leverage all of our communication platforms to engage as many families as possible with the POSUP survey. It also translates into the family's native language. And so just all those considerations, we try to keep at play to engage and hear back from as many families as possible and staff.
And then one more quick question or comment. So the funding for the PPE equipment and the more the physical structure of the school, that's a separate part of CARES money than from the laptops that are provided to help supplement that funding for it?
Yes. The devices and connectivity was a part of the mayor's CARES Act funding. What you saw tonight was our MMPS CARES Act funding application that we've submitted, and a portion of that did go to PPE.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Gentry.
I just have one quick question, and I think you alluded to it earlier when you were presenting the data. Are you leaving the survey open a little bit longer?
We left it open through today thus far. What we will be doing is now that we have a set of data that we can utilize and help guide us, we will be utilizing some additional survey data questions to help us go deeper around where we should be going next. So now that we have a better idea around where our families, parents, and staff are, now we can ask even more detailed questions about their needs as we're moving forward. So this survey will likely end, but we will likely follow it up with additional survey and feedback opportunities.
Yeah, and I just want to just reiterate the importance of Ms. Cooper Walker's request to see that data disaggregated. So we just want to ensure that we've got at least representative feedback from all portions of the city.
Yep.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Ms. Elrod.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have several questions. So my first question is in regards to our, I guess, we're keep referring to as our PPE funding. So within that, and within our operations structures, are we going to be doing any testing of students, or teachers, or staff, or any one of those, anybody else that would be inside of our schools? Are we going to do any testing for people that are going to be inside of our schools?
Okay, Chris, you want to take the first stab at that, and then I can reference the national plan with regard particularly to students when they return?
Sure, be glad to. And as you can imagine, that has also been a part of our discussions in our work group. And what we've tried to look at is the feasibility of doing certain things. Because particularly with the size of maybe some of our high schools, even middle schools, the feasibility of doing something for all students or all staff on a daily basis just isn't there. We have not necessarily discussed testing. What we've talked about is if there are, if there's an exhibit of symptoms, then the school nurse or the health department nurse, in our case, would then isolate the student or staff member. And I'm assuming at some point, there would be a test. That's something we need to nail down. Good question, that we have not, at this point, received a final answer as far as what that testing might look like at the school level. It's mainly been if a student or staff member exhibits symptoms, then of course, every school is going to have a number of the thermometers, the non-such thermometers, where that can be obviously taken, and then looking at any of the other symptoms. But we'll raise that at our next meeting on Friday. And Dr. Battle, you may have more to add.
No, I'll share that, you know, based upon the CDC guidelines and the recommendations that have come from the health experts, it is, it is not recommended through the national plan or via our health experts to do massive testing for students prior to the start of the school year or every day, just because of how symptoms can change. But as Chris mentioned, we do have plans in place to provide, and via the state as well, they provided thermometers for us to be able to check for symptoms throughout the school day. So just so everybody's clear about that, it has not been recommended by the health officials that we do massive amounts of testing before schools, before school or daily due to feasibility and due to the likelihood of still being able to transmit the virus beyond having a fever.
Sure, you mean asymptomatic. Okay, so I want to make sure I understood particularly Mr. Henson's comment, and then from reading the Nashville plan. So if we have a student that is showing symptoms, then they're going to be quarantined inside the nurse's office. And then it is, there's going to be a discussion on Friday potentially of if we're going to provide or do testing to see if it's allergies or not allergies.
Correct.
Or whatever it might be.
That's correct. We've mainly been talking about, since all our buildings are so individually unique, no school building is the same. And so when we talk about a nurse's office, that may not necessarily exist at a school. And so we're looking at alternatives, alternative locations that would be, we would be able to keep students and/or staff members, but particularly students, isolated and away from other students and staff members. And then if there's, of course, more than one, keep everyone socially distant. So we've mainly been concentrating on that aspect. But, but again, we'll, we'll discuss that with the health department on our, at our next meeting on Friday.
Okay. And then I guess my follow-up to that is, as I'm sure many of us know, the health department is sharing their data with the police department. Lots to be said about that. But are they going to be sharing that information with us as schools?
I might have to have you reset your question. My understanding is that they are no longer doing that, if I'm not mistaken. Our, let me let, before I jump too far into that, Melissa Roberts, do you want to offer any commentary to that? But I'm pretty sure that that practice of sharing with the police has, has ended. Melissa, do you want to add anything first before I go deep into my response?
No, I agree, that practice has ended.
Yes.
Okay, and, and we would be maintaining our district practices with regards to, when, part of what we've already been talking about is when we notify staff and families with regards to cases, because of our protections, we're not even able to say who the specific student was. And we will go through our contact tracing protocols with the health department. They will, they will take the lead on that, and that's what they've committed to. But we still have all of our protections in place for our students and families and our employees.
Okay, so though that, that practice has ended with the police, thankfully, we're not going to be asking for that, or anything, that we're not, we're not getting any of that information.
We wouldn't be sharing that information, no.
Got it. Okay, that has been a question. And then my follow-up questions are really about all the computers. And I frankly have sent a really long question, or series of questions about the computers, which I'm not going to ask all of them right now. But I guess I'll ask the most, the most pressing ones. Is 90,000 pieces of hardware, no matter what they are, but particularly because they're laptops and hotspots, is an exceptional lift for us? Particularly because we already have a small or IT group. We have a group that needs more people already, and they already have other responsibilities. So my concerns are, with this significant increase of material, of responsibilities, is there going to be like a dedicated IT or help desk line for parents and students as they're getting used to using these new pieces of technology and the software that's on them? I know that our assumption is a lot of our kids will know how to use the laptops because they've been using them inside their classroom, but particularly for elementary-age students, that's always, that's not always the case. And so what is our plan of trying to help parents? Is it a dedicated line? Is it training? What are we doing to help make sure that they can use what we give them? So do we have anything in plan for that?
Chris, I know your team has been working on this. Do you want to offer what we know thus far?
Sure, and I have seen those questions. Thank you, Dr. Sevier. And I know Doug Renfro, who heads up our IT department, has submitted some responses. We're still massaging, massaging that. And so hopefully, we can, we can get those answers to you. We did have a dedicated help desk when we went through the initial distribution of laptops back earlier. We plan to continue to do that and also to beef that up and to potentially reorganize some of the IT staff to provide more resources for that help desk. And so at this point, that is, that is the plan. And without going back and looking at all of Doug's answers, I don't want to misspeak. And so let us work through those questions and get those responses back to you. But I, I do know that the plan is to continue and to beef up that help desk where students and parents and families can either call in or email any issues that they're having, and hopefully, they will receive a timely response.
Got it. Okay, thank you for, I assumed that you guys had seen that. You know, once again, 90,000 pieces of equipment is a huge lift for us. And we are, like everybody has said, we're going to need some grace from everyone on that. But we need to also make sure that not only we're providing it, but that it's usable when we provide it. And so I want to make sure that we have support services, not only for our teachers, because the assumption is going to be that our teachers can help with these pieces of hardware because they came from the schools. And that's not a fair responsibility to put on a teacher. But it's also going to be necessary for our parents and for the kids as well. And of course, to make sure that they're safe computers, so that there's complete access to parent controls and filters that are needed. So thank you for all of the heavy lifting. I look forward to those answers.
And I'll just add into that last piece that you mentioned, because I remember the response. The, the laptops that will be distributed will have the same filters, the same protections that, that any of our computers would have in schools. That's the way that they're being configured. And so those would not be any different than the computers that we have in schools, in that regard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Baring.
Yes, thank you. See, okay. Will principals choose who their virtual teachers will be?
We're still in the process of making those determinations. But will principals be heavily involved in that process? Absolutely. What we, what we're working on is the, the qualifications, like what, how do you prioritize who should get first kind of dibs in the remote space versus not? We definitely want to be considerate of our employees who have underlying health concerns. We want to, we want to also make sure that we have strength in, in teachers who will be working remotely. And so we'll be building out somewhat of a protocol for principals to use to help them make informed decisions. And of course, on the front end, we'll get principal input in how that protocol should be developed. So we are working towards that to make sure that we are seriously considering the health and well-being of our employees who definitely need the remote setting, and then also teachers who are just gurus in the remote setting and can do a fabulous job keeping our students engaged in learning.
Right. And has there been any consideration about perhaps not starting kindergarten and pre-K in the fall? Maybe postponing that until after the beginning of the year, when there's less chance that those kids could get sick? Because doing remote learning for pre-K and kindergarten students would be very difficult. And then maybe having them continue or doing some summer school or extending the year for that population?
We have definitely considered phases of opening up next school year. I think what we have seen in the data is that our strongest area of parent desire for in-person is in the elementary space. And so I think we've got to take that in consideration, that our youngest learners, families are desiring to get them back to a sense of normalcy wherever possible, and when we can practice good social distancing. So I think we would need to be responsive to that. But at this point, we are considering every strong practice that will set our students up for success. We also have to keep in mind that we have, outside of pre-K, I'm thinking about kindergarten, we have state laws and requirements that we have to follow with the amount, with the amount of time that they're engaged in learning throughout the day. So we would have to take that in, in consideration. And we also, as I mentioned earlier, we have to make decisions that are age-appropriate for our students. And so when we say, when we think about remote learning and virtual learning space, we have to envision something different for our pre-K and K students, if that's a space that they opted into. I think we would not be doing ourselves justice by thinking of it and planning for it in the manner that we would a high school student. And so we would need to make that adjustment to make sure that we're, we're giving them the best that we can offer in this, during this COVID era.
Yes, and kind of in the same line, will we require all high school students then to be virtual, since that is what parents seem to be most comfortable with?
We're thinking less, I'm thinking less of a requirement. I think that we, wherever possible, as we're making these plans, I want us to be, my recommendation will, will be for us to be as responsive and supportive to our families, to our students, to our employees as possible, to set us up for best success. And so while we do have a large portion of high school students who would like to, according to their families, or could be successful in the remote environment, we will definitely also have our share of students who will need to be in a face-to-face environment. I mean, you know, and I just, fundamentally, I, there's not much that can replace a face-to-face environment anyway. And so for some of our students, that's going to be the best way for them to engage and to learn and to get back to a sense of normalcy. And so as opposed to a requirement, the way that I would like to recommend our plan being is to be as responsive as possible to the needs of everyone during this very difficult time. And I keep reminding everyone that nobody caused it, nobody could have planned for it. So we've got to do the best we can to get through it as quickly as possible, hopefully, to get through it, and to make sure that we are closing gaps, that we are addressing any learning loss, and can accelerate learning outcomes for our students at the same time.
Yes. Now, this may be an outlier, but if a child chooses a virtual learning atmosphere, but then wants to participate in extracurricular activities like sports after school, will that be a consideration that will be considered?
Definitely. And that's why we're trying to build a structure where students remain with their assigned school, whatever school that they've chosen, they just might be engaging in a virtual setting. And so we want to keep that sense of community. We want to keep that sense of connectedness wherever possible, so that students can continue to, you know, kind of move as cohorts with teachers that they know, that they care about them, but that they're also connected to clubs and extracurricular activities that we know really support many, many of our, of our students. And so, I mean, I've been talking to school teams and principals and teachers. I mean, they've been doing virtual clubs over the summer and during the spring. Our athletic teams have been working out virtually over the last, you know, couple weeks or so. And so we want to keep those connections available for our students. And so we've got to be thinking about our structures to keep students assigned to their zone schools or their choice schools, so that they can continue to engage in those activities.
I really appreciate it.
We don't want to do anything that takes away a strong, enriching learning experience for our students. So anything that we can protect in this space, that will be a priority for us.
I appreciate your flexibility. If, if a student is sick and they are at school, and they, or they develop and they, or they develop symptoms of COVID while they're at school, what will be the process? I mean, going to a school nurse that's also caring for other students and giving medication, that would probably not be the best way to isolate that student. And sometimes, parents take a bit of time to be able to get off work and get home, you know, and pick up the student. I'm sure you've thought about that as well.
Yeah, it's one of the protocols in our appendix for the Nashville Plan. What our work group team now is doing is bringing in context to, as Chris said, so we're thinking through now. Now that we know what our protocol is and we have our contact in-house and we know who our contact is at the Metro Health Department, and they're going to take responsibility for the contact tracing, so on and so forth. We have our script ready for when we call parents and we have to do a call-out. We've been working through all of that. But what Chris and team is working on is that, like, in a school building, first, we got to make sure that we're very clear on who has a nurse. And we're working with the Metro Health Department to see if we can get a nurse in every school. Then we're looking at the facilities. What are the facility constraints that would allow us or prohibit us from following this plan? And so that's what they're working through now. So it's one thing to have the mayor's reopening got to have the Nashville Plan, but then you've got to think specifically about each school. And so when we say each school then, like, takes the plan and works the plan, there are specifics about schools and the ages of kids that we have to consider to make sure the plan is actually workable. So to your question, we have some schools that have spaces that used to be health clinics or that are health clinics, right? And so you have more of a likelihood to be able to respond in that scenario more effectively. Then you have some smaller schools where the nurse doesn't even have a dedicated space. So how do we account for that? So that's what Chris and his work group team is working on to make sure that we have those individual plans. And I think it's important for us to be clear that we will have district plans and district protocols, but we've got to account for some of the variances that could occur in individual school spaces. So there is not always a one-size-fits-all when you're thinking about implementing. And so that's what we're trying to think through now.
Yes. And then my last question, and I suspect this has come up before as well, but for students who are not doing their work in distance learning, what will be the protocol? I don't know that we can demand that they come in, but what will be the protocol to help those students become more engaged and complete their work and, you know, learn from our school environment?
Yeah, I mean, first off, the connectedness between students and teachers is going to be critical. Addressing their SEO needs are going to be critical. We've got to find out quickly what it takes to engage our students and be willing to move upon that quickly and really exhaust everything to support our students successfully. One of the benefits we have, again, is that we have an MMPS virtual school. And so this is not new work to us as a district. We do plan on leveraging all of the successes of our MMPS virtual school, our leadership there, our teachers who are there, I mean, just amazing with what they're able to accomplish with their students. But really, to answer your question, when we resume school, we're resuming school. And so with that comes, you know, responsibility. With that comes, you know, grading and feedback. Of course, you know, we'll be assessing for learning loss. The testing isn't everything, but we want to make sure that we can track and progress monitor that our students are growing and learning and are truly engaged. And so with that, we will be leaning on the strategies that our virtual teachers and our in-house traditional teachers always leverage to make sure that students are held accountable for their work, for their progress, for engaging, because our goal will be to keep our students growing and learning as of August 4th moving forward, which will be a little bit different from the way we ended the school year. The way that we ended the school year was we wanted to engage and connect, and we were not providing grades. We were providing feedback, and that was definitely a great trial run for us. But in August, the message is not if we're going to resume and continue to grow our students, it's how we're going to do that. And so I think that's the point of clarity that we'll need to echo throughout the district and the city, that we will have accountability measures. We will have engagement goals for everyone, regardless if you're in the virtual or if you're in the face-to-face environment.
Right. Thank you so much, Dr. Battle.
Thank you.
Okay, does anyone have any more questions? Oh, there's Ms. Blair Peters.
Oh, one more. If a teacher tests positive for COVID and then they have to go in quarantine for 14 days, how would that affect their sick time? Given that if you, you know, you get infected and probably, you know, one, two weeks quarantine will wipe out your sick time. Have we thought about how we're going to address that, given that, you know, if you caught something in October and then catch the flu or get a bad science infection, you know, come January, December, how do we affect that with employees?
I think Melissa Roeburg has this one. I'll let her chime in.
The CARES Act included special provisions under the Family Medical Leave Act for emergency sick leave for that exact situation. So they would be entitled to 14 days paid if they were subject to a quarantine order that would not affect their sick time.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I had a few last questions. If no, if everyone else is finished. It appears everyone else is. And Dr. Battle, thank you for this presentation. I do not envy you in your role right now, planning for every possible scenario. One question that has come up for me is whether the percentage of teachers who are teaching virtually versus in-person will affect student budgets in any way?
Our goal is to build this in a way where that is not affected. And part of that is, we've got to, in order for that to not be a large concern and issue for us is that we've got to be responsive to the needs of our families. And if we know that their comfort level is not quite at the level to be in a face-to-face environment, we've got to be able to provide a high-quality educational experience to them in a remote setting, the best we can. And so if we are able to respond to the needs of our families and definitely to our staff, our goal is to build our structures to have very little impact to school budgets. In addition to that, while on that topic, even when we present and share the recommendations to the board with regards to our operating budget, our goal in that space is still to protect our school budgets. We're doing everything we can to ensure our schools maintain their current level of funding so that they can staff and provide the resources necessary in both the in-face and virtual setting.
Okay. And another issue that's come up is, that may be a challenge, is how we provide virtual and in-person instruction in high schools where teachers have to have certain certifications. So we may not have enough teachers to do both. And I guess this may be something you have to decide based on each particular high school, but I wonder if you had any thoughts on that?
Yeah, we've had, as early as today, we had a conversation about this very topic. And one of the, I guess, advantages of being able to be in a virtual space, which you cannot always capitalize on when you're in 100% traditional setting, is that if you have, for instance, a special certification with a teacher and a course that needs to be offered in a virtual space, you have the opportunity to come on. So now more students have access to a course that they might not have had a teacher in their school building who had that specialty certification. Or there weren't enough students who signed up for the course, and now you have access to it. And so it gives us an opportunity to leverage the strengths of our educators in the district as well. And another option that we would also have is that we do have an MMPS virtual school. And our virtual school staff have been incredible in meeting this very need, that when a school is unable to provide a specific course, they have, in many situations, stepped up and provided it on behalf of those students in that school or multiple students across multiple schools.
Okay, thank you. And then, so what happens? So once parents decide that they are virtual or in-person, what happens if mid-semester, they say, hey, now we're afraid, there's been increasing cases. We want to now, we're in-person, now we want to go virtual. How are we going to handle that?
Yeah, and this is, Jill, I started smiling when you started asking your question because I thought this is also where you were going to go. This is probably the most difficult part of this process. We have a very transient population here in MMPS. And with providing the structures, we will be providing some expectations around the making a decision. It will be very difficult and nearly impossible for us as a district to be able to maintain the in-and-out flow of virtual versus in-person. And so that is something that parents, students will have to consider as they're making their decision. Now, if we truly are in a scenario where there's an uptick in cases or in a particular school community, the likelihood is, is that we will be going back to 100% remote anyway. So let's say you're a family and you chose in-person and things just went haywire. I mean, the experts are expecting a peak in the fall. And if we experience that, one, we will be probably, at that point, making a larger district decision. If not, the city might be making a larger decision. And so there are some contingencies there that you likely still wouldn't have to opt in and out because we might be making the decision on behalf of the district if we find ourselves in that situation. But the ability to transition in and out of remote to face-to-face will be nearly impossible for us to pull off and maintain social distancing. And so there would be a commitment from families that, and we're looking at various scenarios where they would have to commit for a quarter or a semester time, given the scenarios, because it's going to help us best plan and really protect everyone, given the COVID scenarios we could be facing.
Okay. And then the other question that keeps running through my mind is I can see scenarios where we would have, if you're surveying the whole district, you're going to get a certain percentage of families that want to do virtual and certain ones that want to be in-person in the school. But I can see where we may have certain areas of town, where we may have more working families that want to put, the majority of the kids are going to be in school versus other areas where we would have, you know, more children staying home. And are we able to accommodate a large population at a school? Or at that point, would we consider moving some of the children possibly to another location if we have an over, a normally crowded school, but which would be overcrowded for purposes of social distancing?
Yeah, so what you will see in the Nashville Plan is we look at the social distancing options that have come from CDC and from our health experts. It gives us somewhat of a formula of what you can accomplish, given the size of the school and the number of students, right? And so, you know, for instance, if you cannot achieve the six-foot distance between each students, which, by the way, most school districts are saying that's nearly impossible to do, then you would look at masks. If you are unable to do masks, and maybe it's the littlest, youngest students where it might be impossible for them to maintain, you might look at sneeze guards. So there are different strategies that you can, that we can leverage to make sure that we're within CDC guidelines. Of course, wherever we can reduce the size of classes, we're going to go for it. We already have protocols in place for large gatherings and the cafeteria space and transportation. We're looking at all those protocols. But what will help us fine-tune those protocols is once we know where families and students will opt to be in the fall. And to your point, we're going to have to do a huge, I mean, very intentional charge at trying to make sure all families know the options before them and that they do have equal opportunity to let us know what is best for their family. And so we're working on targeted plans to make sure that we have, we're not just waiting on parents, but that we also have our outreach to make sure we're connected with as many families as possible.
Okay, and I've got one more. I think this is a quick question. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Bush after that. So my other question is, I don't know how pervasive this is. I don't even know if it's true. But I did get a complaint that there was a computer pawned, one of the ones that we gave out. The high school student had pawned a computer. I'm wondering how we're able to control the use of these computers or we're tracking them, the ones that we're giving out? Because that's a huge number of computers to be giving to, especially some of these older kids who might think of better uses for them. Do we have protocols in place for that?
Yes, let me let, I'm just looking at my list here, who's on the call. Probably Chris or Ken, you want to chime in? This is much easier when we're in the boardroom. I can just see who's where, but...
Yeah, this is Chris. And I'm going to go back to, that was one of Ms. Elrod's questions. And so I'm going to go back and find that response that Doug Renfro provided, so I make sure that I say it correctly. Let's see here. Here we go. So Doug Renfro's response was, "We haven't collected the laptops from the spring deployment yet as students are still using them for grade improvement and summer learning experiences. We did have three families report stolen laptops and each completed a police report. Prior to the deployment, we did notify the Metro Nashville Police Department that these devices were being distributed and could potentially end up at pawn shops. And to be aware, we currently have a team that includes external partners planning for the larger deployment." And the question was, in relation to, what community partnerships are we going to have with pawn shops, goodwill, et cetera, to make sure that the laptops or hotspots are returned back to us and are not sold or donated? And so that was the response. And we'll continue to refine that response. But that's what we've done with the spring deployment of the laptops.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Bush? I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Gone it y'all, got me again. Okay. So, Ms. Pro, thank you so much for your last comments. And it made me think about the options that Dr. Battle and you were just talking about as far as parents opting in to whichever one they decide, if it's virtual or if it's in-face, you know, in-person. Do we have a deadline? Or I know possibly you're still creating that information to be sent out to the families. Is there a deadline for your team to know exactly the direction or how to start setting up those options?
Yeah, we plan on getting that information out within the next couple of weeks. And I think Ms. Bugs asked a very similar question. We're working on those details so that we can get all the needs to know out there to families before they make that decision for next school year. We know how critically important it is for them to be able to make the decision and to have that information. So we're working diligently to pull that information together and to roll out our system by which families can make that decision. So that is to come. You might also remember that just a couple of weeks ago, I had not planned to make this, give these recommendations this soon. But I know the importance of everybody really being informed and wanting to know more. So I wanted to get this in front of the board as soon as possible, given the feedback that we've received. So we're trying to work ahead of the timelines that we have in place. And so hopefully, right around July 4th, the week of July 6th, we can roll out more details to not only families, but to our employees as well. So more to come. And we're going to try to, we're going to begin to try to push this information out as quickly as possible, to try to push this information out as quickly as possible, knowing that there are lots of questions, there's lots of things to solve for. And so we definitely know a lot of them. We might not know them all. So as we hear, you know, things for consideration, we definitely want to roll those into our plans.
Thank you. My last comment about the laptops, I do, that's one great thing about having students in metro schools. You're able to definitely connect and be able to relate to things that are happening in our district with our kids. And I do have two lovely Dell laptop computers in my home. And I will tell you that my students, just so Chris can go back and tell the team over at IT, that they did a phenomenal job helping my students get logged on. And it did not take a long time for them to get through to the help desk. They were so, so quick, and I was really shocked on how fast my students got through. They don't, you know, they don't follow directions well. So you have to kind of push these kids, you know? So while I'm at work, I'm on the phone telling them, you better get on that phone with IT, and I better get a response. And they immediately called me back and said, Mom, calm down. I got through and I got the help that I needed. So I just want to tell you, Chris, go back and tell them that they did, they're doing a great job. And I'm sure as we grow these laptops, that I'm sure that they will not come short of customer service for our families. So thank you.
All right. Do we have any more questions for Dr. Battle before we move to announcements? All right. Well, thank you very much for those presentations. I know that people were eagerly awaiting that presentation. And so I appreciate us having the conversation a bit early. And I am going to go start tonight with Ms. Pupa Walker for announcements.
Thank you. Just a couple of things for everybody to remember. Next week, 1:00 PM on Tuesday, the 30th, we have a special call, board meeting to vote on the final budget based on Metro Council's approval of their budget. So tune into that. And then our one meeting in July, on July 14th, we'll be hosting a 4:00 PM Governance Committee meeting to address a range of policies. And so reach out to me if you have questions about that or want to put anything on the agenda. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Blair Peters?
I just want, whoops, camera. I just want to take a moment here just to recognize the lives of two of my Fisk professors, Dr. Revis Mitchell, who was one of the chair of the Tennessee Historical Commission, and what he contributed to Nashville and education in Nashville, that he's been a history professor at Fisk and taught here in Nashville for a long time, was the historian of, consultant for the original Roots, not the reboot. And so I just want to recognize his life and the effect that he'd had on, I know hundreds of Nashvilleians and metro school students who, particularly through Fisk University. And I just want to recognize his life. And then also Dr. Jean Lambert, who was also professor at Fisk in the Fine Arts Division, who also taught quite a few metro Nashville students and the impact they had in the liberal arts arena at Fisk University, and acknowledged their lives in the education arena. And I hope everyone has a healthy summer. And thank you to the administration also for putting on the virtual graduation last Sunday to honor the, not a more formal kind of ceremony that we could for the students of Class of 2020. So I just want to say again, congratulations to all the seniors in the Class of 2020 for getting through an unprecedented and tough school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bush?
I did it this time. Y'all can hear me, right?
Good job.
I just wanted to say again, thank you to those board members that came out for Anna's Mass today. It was a beautiful ceremony to celebrate her life. So it was really great to see the administration there, again, some board members that did attend. So it was definitely, I'm sure her family greatly appreciated all the love and support that was there today. And also, I am so excited for the Class of 2020. Congratulations again to all of those students. I have heard nothing but wonderful things about the professionals. And I think Dr. Battle and I had spoken about this before, that maybe that's something that we should definitely, we should consider every year, because it was so much fun. Again, I think I parted harder than they did. So I just wanted to also give them another shout out to them, and we wish them the very best. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bugs.
Yes, thank you. And again, Shepherd family, we, you know, our prayers and thoughts are with you. Really hope that you enjoyed the flowers and just know that we, you know, we're wrapping our arms around you during this very trying time, even with the pandemic. You've now lost a loved one. On a lighter note, I do want to welcome and thank Ashford Hughes for joining us as the new Director of Equity, no, Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. Sir, you have your work cut out for you, but I can't wait to work with you. Just thank you for taking on this role. And it took almost a year, but we finally have an education liaison for the city. So I'm sure we'll be meeting with him individually and wish him the best of luck as we work to connect this city and support education as best we can. I want to continue to send my thoughts and prayers to the Barbara Hale family. Tia was an occupational therapist in MMPS, was also an MMPS graduate, and sadly passed a few weeks back, but she was honored at the city council meeting this past week. So we continue to send them our thoughts. And I want to just say to the greater community at large, even though we're in very unprecedented times with limited resources, black lives do matter. They do matter. And I thank you to all the, all of those community members who have reached out to us, to hold us accountable, to make suggestions, to ask questions, to probe us to be better and do more for our students, especially those that we may have traditionally kind of seemingly forgotten about. So in the, with that line of thinking, community members, please continue to engage us. Please continue to make suggestions. If you have a policy suggestion, if you have a budget request, please feel comfortable reaching out to a board member. If your board member is not one that you know or don't feel comfortable with, reach out to all of us. And I think that, I think we can really make some progress. Thank you.
Ms. Fearing?
Thank you. I want to echo Fran's comments today. What's a beautiful Requiem Mass for our beloved Anna Shepherd. I want to recognize previous board member, Joanne Brannan, Amy Froeg, Fran Bush, Dr. Battle, Hank Clay, and the Mayor of Nashville, John Cooper, and his policy person, John Bunton. We really felt Anna's presence this morning, especially on the departing song, When the Saints Come Marching In. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Elrod?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to welcome several new principals in the District 2 area. So we have at Haywood, we have Damon Cathy, and at Oliver, we have Hawaya Wilson. So we are so glad to have you. Granberry has also, I'm not going to step on the toes of that announcement, because I don't think it's been announced yet. So we also have a new principal at Granberry. On the Oliver note, we also have three teachers who won the 2020 Blue Ribbon Award for Teacher Leadership category as a teaching team. So congratulations to Nick Keel, Amber Whitting, and Jane Ryan. And so I wanted to thank those teachers, particularly because last year was so different for us, and this coming year will be as well. I wanted to say thank you for all of their commitment to our students and their coworkers. As Jeannie mentioned, there's going to be the budget meeting next week. We would really like it if everyone would please attend and be prepared so we can have that 1:00 PM meeting. And then during the governance meeting, there is going, I'm going to be bringing the naming facilities, which is our Board Policy 3.21, to be reviewed and discussed with board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gentry.
Thank you. I just also want to welcome all of the new principals that we have in the District 1 area. We've got new principals at White's Creek, at Haynes, at Jones, at Cumberland. Welcome to all of those individuals. We certainly, certainly appreciate you taking on these roles of serving our kids. I do want to just follow up with Ms. Blair Peters and her comments about Dr. Revis Mitchell and Dr. Jean Lambert. Jean Lambert was a church member of mine at First Baptist Church, Capitol Hill, and she continued her love of teaching and her passion for kids and youth. She did a lot of public speaking training and oratorical training with the youth of our church. And, you know, anyone who spent any time in Dr. Revis Mitchell's presence, you left better. You left better for that time that you spent there. I also want to remind us and individuals watching of the Town Hall meeting for the White's Creek Cluster that will be held on June 29th at 6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. And there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.